All set? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. We really appreciate seeing so many people in the audience. And at this time, is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes 5-0. And we did vote tonight to approve 10 homeschooling requests, and those were approved 5-0. And now, without further ado, it is time for our showcase, which is to welcome our new staff members to the Narragansett School System. And I'm really excited that you are here, and I turn things over to Dr. Cummings.
Thank you, Tammy. So I am also very excited to see everyone here tonight. So everyone that is here, all of our staff member, new staff members, went through an extensive interview process. I'm sure at many times they're like, "I have to go there again." And, you know, we're really grateful that they are bringing their talents to Narragansett. Each of these positions was highly competitive, you know, with many, many applicants, and each one of the teachers that we hired went through a rigorous process. So they were interviewed at the school level, and then a couple of times at the school level, and then they were brought to me, and I interviewed them again as well. So we're very proud to have them all here. And so I'm going to have our principals go through and introduce the new faculty members in their building, and just say a mouthful about each one. And we will begin with our elementary school today. So welcome to Lisa.
Hello, everybody. I'm very, very excited to introduce my two new teachers. We have Emily Gallo. Emily, come over here. Emily is a preschool teacher. She graduated from Rhode Island College. She came to us from, well, she started in Providence, went to Coventry, and then we were happy to get her this year to join our preschool program. And she's doing great. She's a natural, she's fit right in. It's been such a nice addition to our preschool staff. So welcome, Emily.
Thank you.
I also have the pleasure of introducing Ashley Heater. Ashley also graduated from Rhode Island College. She has, comes to us with lots of experience in a variety of ways. She was a literacy coach, she's been a third-grade teacher, she's been a dean of students, and she's been a sixth-grade ELA teacher. Her most recent spot was in South Kingston, but we were happy enough to snag her to join us. She's also a Narragansett resident who has a son who is going to be joining our preschool program very soon. So welcome to Ashley Heater, third grade. That's all I have for you. We're going to have Colleen come up next.
Good evening. So I'd like Julie Malloy to come on up here. So this is our new school nurse, Julie Malloy. She started her career at Rhode Island Hospital as a Level 1 trauma nurse, so a little bit different than what she's doing now, but same in some ways. She left Rhode Island Hospital to further her education, and eventually she worked and got a degree to do school nurse teaching. She worked at Gilbert Stuart prior to coming here, and then in the summer, she works as an RN at Camp Hoffman. We are very excited to welcome Julie Malloy, and she's been a great addition to our peer school team. And that's all we have at the peer school. And so Dan's next.
Thank you. The reason it looks like there's so many people in the audience is because we had 10 new hires at the high school, which is wonderful, and they're adding wonderfully to our staff. I'd like to call up Victoria Kraus. She's a social studies teacher. She comes from us, she comes to us from Providence County Day School, and she lives in North Providence, and she's already made an impact in our social studies department. Also, I'd like to call up Jeff Bitten. Jeff was a fantastic find. He's a math teacher, has a computer science background, loves being at Narragansett High School. In fact, he lives in Narragansett. Used to live in Cranston, Dalton Lincoln, and now he's in Narragansett. And it's really great to have him in our math department. Thanks a lot, Jeff. Carolyn LaPrize. Let's bring Carolyn up. Carolyn's one of our new special educators. She's a resource teacher. She lives in Narragansett. She worked in Coventry for a while before coming to Narragansett.
K through 9 in Narragansett.
K through 9 in Narragansett, okay? So we're glad to have you at Narragansett High School. Thank you. Also, Jolene Lewis. Come on up, Jolene. Jolene is in our English department. She comes to us from down south in North Carolina. But you were originally from Rhode Island, yeah? So she's coming back home, and she's a great addition to our staff as well. Thank you, Jolene. And Sam Perrin. Come on up, Sam. We were also fortunate to have Sam in our social studies department, along with Victoria. And he is a recent graduate from URI. And you went to high school at South Kingston?
Yeah, yup.
So he's a local boy, knows how wonderful Narragansett High School is, and is excited to get into it. So thanks a lot, Sam.
Thank you.
So we have a few other teachers that are not here tonight. Shall I name them?
Please do.
Okay. From Charahoe, in our science department, teaching chem and physics, is AJ D'Angelo. We have a new teacher from the peer school, living in Narragansett, Jen Fishman, although she's not new to the district. We also have a new math teacher, Kristi Bevahani. She just moved to East Greenwich, and she was a teacher in Connecticut for a number of years. She's in, what's that?
In East Lime.
East Lime, yes. Also, Chris Hupfeld is a math teacher. We replaced four people in our math department. He's a new teacher as well. He lives in Providence. And a great addition to our staff, originally from Australia. He worked in West Warren before coming to NHS. He's running our Harbor Program, which we're really excited about. It was our old alternative learning program, and he's grabbed the bull by the horns and making great strides at the high school. So Sean Rogan. Those are the new people at the high school.
And that's all we do still?
That's it.
All right. So I want to say a special thank you. I know you all had a very long day, but it really does mean a lot to us that you took the time to come so we could match a face with a name. Like, that means a lot to us. We know you had a long day. You have families, you came here, and then you have a long day, you know, tomorrow as well. We do really appreciate it, and we definitely recognize that the rigorous screening process you had to go through, because superintendent has very, very high standards, as do the principals. So the fact that you are here tonight, and that you were selected to join Narragansett, we know that you are the best of the best, but it means a lot to us that you took the time to come tonight. So that being said, I'm going to take a very brief recess, in case you would like to leave and go have dinner and that. You're welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as you want, but we are going to take a very brief recess in case our new staff and their families might want to make an exit. Thank you. Okay, we are back resuming our meeting, and it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Sure, come on up and state your name, please.
Hello. My name is Ryan McGuire. I have just a brief comment on meeting formats. If the Narragansett School Committee values the essential role of community voice and input on important matters discussed at the school committee meetings, then I ask this Narragansett School Committee to embrace offering the community a hybrid meeting format consisting of in-person and virtual remote participation. Families, parents, students, kindergarten through 12th grade, and teachers are expected to function and be productive via Narragansett's virtual instructional days. The school committee should not only perform as such, but lead by example by offering the public a hybrid meeting that demonstrates utmost inclusivity and access, exit, I'm sorry, accessibility. COVID-19 era accommodations, such as participating in a Zoom meeting, can increase interpersonal interactions, which are essential for school committee and community engagement in person or remote. A hybrid meeting format allows for participants who may not be able to attend physical in-person location to effectively share their input remotely. Online platforms provide a viable solution for individuals to interact and make remote communication easy. With a particular focus on equity, a hybrid meeting format would allow accessibility for those unable to attend the in-person meeting location, such as the town hall, via a computer, tablet, or smartphone, and may benefit those in our community without transportation, schedule conflicts, have a need to stay home, or individuals with disabilities, or who may have need for childcare. Inclusivity is critical for community engagement. Offering in-person and remote accessibility will help develop relationships with underrepresented groups. A hybrid meeting would reduce economic and travel-related strains that may discourage individuals from otherwise participating in the in-person meeting location. Developing data shows trends towards hybrid meeting options may be an effective climate change mitigation strategy. Instead of holding meetings only in-person in a public place that is open and physically accessible to those public, the school committee can offer adequate and alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the school committee meetings. Adequate and alternative means may include, without limitation, providing public access through telephone, internet, satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing. Current members of the school committee have the power to authorize a hybrid meeting format consisting of in-person and virtual remote participation for the 2022-2023 school year. The Narragansett School Committee can choose to steward a standard to ensure future meetings are made accessible in all forms, and thus serve all individuals and families. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Okay. We are moving on to school reports, and we will go from the youngest to the oldest, and then finish with Melissa. So, Narragansett Elementary School.
Hello again. I am happy to report that we've had such a great, smooth transition to the start of our school year. It's so great to have our kids back in our building. We've reformatted our classrooms back to the way it used to look. It's just very exciting and invigorating for both the students and the teachers. I can't say enough about how wonderful Steve Gormly and his staff helped prepare us. I mean, really, a lot of work removing and putting back together furniture and carpets and all kinds of fun things that we used to have in our building. So that, that's been a really nice, smooth transition. We started our school year for our teachers with a lot of professional development. We did a lot of focusing on the right-to-read proficiency, especially at the elementary level. They, they have to spend quite a bit of time on the, the learning of the step, several, sorry, several strands of, of reading. And the exciting part about that is that although we were taught a lot of these reading components and strategies in undergrad and grad school, unless you revisit it and talk about it some more, we kind of forget. So this has been a really nice opportunity for us to get together as grade levels and as, as me, as part of their learning cohort, to really talk about the best way to provide reading instruction to our younger learners, and really taking a bigger focus on our phonemic awareness and phonics instruction. So that professional development, although it's a lot, it has provided us the opportunity to really look at our quality of instruction. Another thing that we're really spending a lot of time on is we adopted the Bridges Math Program. We already have it pre-K through 1, but grades 2 through 4 are using the new resources. So we've spent a considerable amount of time, both in common planning time and in the classrooms, with just learning how to use it and how to apply it. And the kids are really enjoying it. It's a very much different model than what we've used in the past, and our teachers are really embracing it. So it, you know, at some point, we'll, we'll like to share some of that with you in the future, but not yet, because they're just really learning about it. But it's, it's been a great transition. Certainly, the teachers that are teaching second grade, they, they can see the difference, like, of what the kids came with first grade, so it's not all brand, brand new. SEL, we have brought back our mascot, because COVID, he went away, but our mascot, Fantaski, has returned, and so have the Golden Necklaces. So the Golden Shark Award has been re-brought back, where kids get awarded weekly the opportunity to wear the Golden Shark Necklace. And they're chosen by, right now, they're teachers, but the goal is, is eventually the students get to choose who they believe in their class, has made best choices in being the best student they could be. We also have High Five, High Fin certificates that kids get to bring home to share that they've been a great shark member of our community. So on the back goes a name and the reason for what they've done. And we're looking at possible outlooks such as kindness, being a friend, also persevering, doing their work, just all-around great student. Our back-to-school nights have been pretty successful. We've fully finished four out of six, and we've had really good turnouts, because now we can open school up to parents, and they get to go to each individual grade and hear what's unique about their grade level. So that's been up and running. I have two more to go. Our PTO offered their first in-person meeting this week, actually, it was last night, and we had quite a few members join. And we're doing Sundays on Sunday, if any of you want to come and scoop, or just visit us on Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 at the elementary school in the back. We're back to having that activity as well. Pumpkin carving and illumination night will be happening in October, and the enrichment has started up again. So we have our garden club up and running. We have eight slots for enrichment that are going to go out in the month of October, and we're very excited to have that up and running for after school. And I think that is all we need right now.
So I hear you say you had, you have six different open house nights?
I do one per grade level, because parents, they cross grade levels, and they really want to go into their classrooms. So a couple of years ago, we talked about how can we get parents to come in, instead of having one big night and they just roam around?
No, I get it, I'm just saying, good, good for you, principal, that's six open houses.
It's worth it. It's really, really worth it, because the, the parents actually do get to go to the classroom and hear about life as their students grade. So it's nice, and every, every class does do a similar PowerPoint, and they do such a nice job preparing, because each experience at each grade level is a little bit different. So it's nice. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from any school committee members for Lisa?
Thanks.
It's great to hear all the, you know, the COVID restrictions lifted, you can get kind of back to normal, the first kind of normal opening in over two years.
You can feel it. It's really nice. The whole entire community is really, like, excited. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Peer school.
All right, so this is my first official report from the peer school. So first off, I'd like to say it's been a great opening to the school year. I've had an amazing time. You know, I know I wrote this in my last report, but I've been able to, through my entry plan, meet with parents over the summer, meet with some teachers, community members, and it's really been a great experience. It's really entered me in to know some faces before even getting in the building, to kind of hear some concerns, and hear some, you know, all of the amazing things that are being done at the peer school. So that's kind of led some of the work in leadership teams in the school. So that's kind of been the start for myself. But for all the teachers, the year has truly started off strong. You know, and seeing the students who are really the heart and soul of what we do every day has been really refreshing. Our students have taken their I-ready math and reading tests. They did that last week. So we're kind of looking at the data as teams to kind of serve our students as best we can. Our fifth graders had orientation during that, that week that teachers came back for professional development. The teachers really planned and took a lot of time getting ready for the orientation, which went really, really well. You know, they helped to get the fifth graders to know the school. It's a really great process in transitioning those fifth graders. I was able to see it at the end of last year. Lisa has them come up for, you know, just a little bit of time during the school year, and then they're able to come in during that PD time with the teachers, so that they're not really in shock the first day of school, and really acclimates them into the, the building. And they've been doing really, really well. It's really great to see them there. This past Thursday, we had a very successful open house, as Lisa said earlier, same with us. We had a great turnout. I think, you know, coming back into in-person events has been really, really important for everybody, and it was great. They all participated. We did a little bit differently so that all UA teachers were able to speak with the parents and kind of let them know about their core content, and then we had our core content teachers meet with all the parents and kind of get them in there. So that was great, a great event, and it was very successful. I'm also very happy and really excited, as are the students, to report that our clubs and after-school activities are coming back. We are trying to get as many advisors and volunteers and to, to do these events, but, you know, a few of them, for example, one that's coming back is the chess club, and I know a lot of students really enjoy that. So that's happening. We're working on trying to get some intramurals started, so that students can kind of have a, a little less competitive approach to activity after school, which we know is super important for, especially the middle-aged, middle, middle school students to, to get involved and be a part of something. So we're really excited with that, and we do have some students coming in, either from other schools or from elementary school, really excited to share their ideas about what they want to start at the school. I know the garden club is huge in the elementary school, and they're just talking and seeing if there's any other interests like that in our building. So that's been really, really refreshing to get back to, you know, some of those after-school activities for the students. And I want to finalize my report with a little sports report. So the peer school is happy to announce that we currently have 86 student athletes on the soccer and cross-country teams, and we're looking forward to the next six weeks in the, in the Southern Division, and see how they do. That's all.
Great. Thank you for the thorough report. We appreciate that. Any questions for the peer school? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. High school, Mr. Warner.
Thank you. I hate to be redundant, but, but they said. I too want to thank Steve Gormly and his maintenance crew for preparing our school. It looks wonderful, clean and shiny, and the kids are rising to the occasion. And so it's been a great opening at the high school. We're very fortunate in that regard. We also have some new curriculums that have been started over the last couple of years, one in English and one in math. That seems to be going well as well. And we're keeping with the great tradition that Greg Breen had brought us with the Ag Program. Our students placed first in New England for the landscape design at the Big E, which is a great accomplishment, and we're very proud of that. Also, fall sports are in big, in full swing. We have a bunch of kids, about 50% About 50% of our students are active in in scholastic sports, which is wonderful. Our back-to-school night is tomorrow night, where parents come and they get their child's schedule, and they follow the schedule throughout the evening. Are we meeting the gymnasium for 15 minutes, some brief announcements, and then they send them on their way? Pitcher Day is September 30th. October 12th is our PSAT Day for grades nine, 10, and 11. Seniors be starting their senior project and senior graduation requirements during that time. The guidance department held a open house, sorry, the guidance department held a virtual senior parent night Tuesday night, and it was well-attended. And actually, the virtual parent nights that we have seem to be much more well-attended than the in-person parent nights. So that's been a surprise, too. But the high school is up and running and looking forward to a great school year.
Great. Any questions for the high school? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Student Services.
Good evening. So it's been a great opening for us also, but I wanted to take some time to celebrate the Special Education Department. I had 23 special educators and related service providers take time this summer to do a 10-hour module to improve their IEP writing. It was a mixture of reading a textbook that we purchased for them, completing some online modules that have been put out by the U.S. Department of Ed, doing an in-person session with me, and then spending some time doing IEP reviews and reaching out to their families before the first day of school. So I knew this was an exciting opportunity, but I didn't know if they would join me in my excitement, but they did, and they're asking to do something else next summer. So I'm excited about that. As you know, all of our decisions are made through IEP determinations, and we had four students that IEP team determined that Narragansett was their least restrictive environment. So we were able to return them from their out-of-district placement, and we're excited about that. You have great interest and support for the Narragansett Transition Academy. I'm excited to tell you that we have five students in the program this year, so it is growing, and two of those are tuitioned in from another district. Mr. Warner introduced Mr. Rogan, who is unable to join us tonight, but I just want to thank you for supporting that position. Although the previous role was an ALP, an Alternative Learning Program, we've really shied away from using that term because we're looking actually to keep students in their general ed setting and give them the skills in order to be successful. So fresh off of a decision this afternoon, we're actually calling it the Harbor Program because it's a safe place for students to go when they need a break, they need some extra help or somebody to talk to, but also know that the true success is when they're coming to school, they're in class, and they're participating and engaged. I'm also super excited, just to kind of give you a little foreshadowing of October. Our presentation will be in partnership with Thunder Mist, and we'll be sharing a new grant with you and a new partnership. I've had an opportunity to spend a lot of time with Thunder Mist this summer and really learning about the amazing programs that they have for our community, and we're excited to have them join us. So although the principals, you know, talk about sports, I know no presentation is complete for me without talking about preschool. So we currently have 69 students enrolled. We have 13 students who will turn three between now and March, who have all already been identified through the early intervention system. And then we've kept eight spots open because we have a capacity of 90, and we need to make sure under federal and state regulations that we have room if a child moves in or a child is newly found eligible. So what that does mean is that Narragansett has a waitlist. And so if anyone is calling us now, we need to put them on the list. And if for some reason someone were to leave us, then we could call somebody on our list, and we would bring them. Jill and Lisa and the preschool team are very busy preparing for the Bright Stars visit. We have scheduled a mock visit, so they'll be coming next Friday, and they'll be going through what they will normally do when, I think they come in November to do our actual visit for our rating. And then they'll give us feedback, and then we'll use that feedback to prepare for the visit. So as always, thank you for your support.
I don't have a question, it's just a comment. I really appreciate and like, like, the branding and the rebranding, like, I think that is fantastic, like the Harbor Program, and then like the logo with the Transition Academy and all that stuff. I think that's fantastic. I love that.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from Melissa?
I do. You know, I'm always really excited to hear your sort of initiative and creative thinking for student services. I would like to hear just a little bit more about the Harbor Program. And, you know, it's, you hired a special educator to fill that role. I'm not, is it an academic role? Is it a counseling role? And why you chose special education versus social worker counseling? Just curious.
Yeah. So my understanding is that the previous ALP program was far more self-contained. But in looking at the students who have really struggled since we've come back from COVID, certainly there are a mixture of students that are eligible for special and students who are not eligible. So by having a dual-certified teacher, that that kind of met both of those needs, and so that's sort of is, was a key piece for us. It also allowed those students who have study skills or a resource time in their IEP to have that time rather than being part of like a grade-level group with somebody who they've really invested time in building rapport with. And so our goal was finding the right person, someone who understood that behavior is a form of communication, who had a strong skill in building rapport with adolescents, and someone who could partner with families and their colleagues, the teachers, in order to meet the needs of the students. And during interviews, you know, Dr. Cummings was talking about the interview process. One of the things that I think I asked a lot of questions about or was listening for is, do you have a curiosity for what's causing them to not be engaged? Right? Because we can jump to some conclusions, but it's really finding out what that is. And so the caseload is very small, but eight to 10, but it, that's the person, when a student doesn't show up to class, he wears a radio, the office contacts him, he's immediately trying to figure out where, where's that student? Why is that student not in class? Students absent that day, calling the family, you know, why aren't you here? And then we had some students who we saw a pattern of kind of struggling with the longer blocks, and so they would ask to go to the bathroom or they'd ask, you know, and they'd be like, kind of doing the loop, right? So now the plan is, no, you come to to the harbor, which will be our safe place, and you can finish your work here. You know, we can make that connection. So we know where you are all the time, and we can engage you in learning, and hopefully that leads to you passing your classes, you know, building up that resilience, which is a real goal that Dr. Cummings has had this year for all of us, to be able to give you the strategies. We're working on getting the assistant for that program, which was our goal from day one, but finding staff has been a little bit more challenging. And so Mr. Rogan will actually have the ability to even go in and co-teach some of the classes that some of the students are struggling in and observe and help them with strategies. And so we're really excited about it, and I think it takes kind of the rebranding, it takes the ALP program of meeting their educational needs and really moving it to giving them the strategies to be successful.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Melissa? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're on to school committee reports. Does anybody have a report to give? Alex, you want to go first?
Sure. Just real quick, the Health and Wellness Committee met for our first meeting of the 2022-2023 school year yesterday, September 20th at 4:00 p.m. We reviewed some focus points that we would like each of the subcommittees to focus on this year. Some of these topics included a strong focus on mental health awareness and the wellness of our teachers and staff. We have a terrific system in place for students with the new partnership with Thunder Mist, which you're going to hear more about in October, apparently, in-school counseling, school psychologists, and other mental health support staff. There is currently a waiting list for therapists out there, so we are very lucky to have this support staff. Virtual teletherapy sessions are held during the school day and will be based on the Massachusetts model. Other topics of focus include using resources to reach out to qualifying families to apply for free and reduced lunch, looking into possible nutrition and/or cooking clubs at the peer and high school, building awareness on the dangers and risks of vaping and cracking down on the use of e-cigarettes, and getting greater student involvement to the committee. There is a great opportunity for student involvement, community service, or even a senior project that could align with working with the Health and Wellness Committee. We will be meeting on the third Tuesday every two months to reflect on the Nutrition, Mental, Social, Emotional, and Physical Fitness Subcommittee Reports. Our next meeting will be held on November 15th at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have a report to give? And the only thing that I will say is Diane and I did have a policy subcommittee meeting, and those two policies are up tonight for first read. Okay. All right. So we're on to the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you. Well, certainly, you know, the principals covered a lot that I would also, you know, typically support, very smooth opening. You know, I will share with you, so we start our school year with a convocation, and what that means is that it's kind of a formal kickoff of our meeting. So all staff, teachers, you know, teachers aides, you know, everybody comes, and we do a program where we have a couple of student speakers. We're amazing this year. You know, we have not, we did not do Teacher of the Year last year because we really felt like it was not fair to single out any one individual, but typically, our outgoing Teacher of the Year gives a speech, and I give a little talk. And so this year, I, as Melissa alluded to, talked a lot about resilience and this idea of what makes someone resilient, right? And this whole idea of being resilient doesn't mean that you avoid challenges, it's that you accept challenges and you learn from them. You might not always be successful, but each one of them helps you grow and become stronger. And I have three Rs, right? So we talked about resilience, we talked about this idea of rigor, right? And rigor doesn't actually always mean more. It means, you know, providing appropriate challenge to students so you help them to continue to grow and giving multiple opportunities for success as students go forward. We also talked a lot about respect and respecting the idea of how are we respecting one another? How are we respecting our students? How are we teaching our students to have respect for others and other ideas and to be not just understanding, but willing to reach out and learn about other people and also being respectful of their community and being a part of their community? So, you know, it's really a time for us in that convocation to try to set a tone for the year. And so I think it went pretty well, and we certainly had a great opening to the year. You know, a couple of other important updates is that during those RPD sessions, Gail did a terrific job of ensuring that we were getting all of our right-to-read work done, which is a state mandate, but it's also, I think, as you heard tonight, something that we've embraced to make sure that it's really beneficial to our students in the long term. We also spent a lot of time on our new platform, so Schoology, which is our new learning management system. Because with technology, nothing ever stays the same. You know, our former platform from Power School was updated to Schoology, so we did a lot of training with that, grades seven through 12. And various other building-level pieces were really important. So and again, Giulio and Vanessa did a great job with that. I can't say enough about the work of our support staff in getting our schools, you know, ready to go. As you've heard me say many times, it is really difficult right now. We are short-staffed, and it is, and we are trying to hire people. We have great new contracts. We are trying to attract people to those. It just can be very difficult to find that staff. Right now, we're okay, you know, so we have enough custodians and enough bus drivers and van drivers, but, you know, we don't have the cushion that we've had in past years. You know, and a final highlight I will give to you is construction's beginning on the auditorium. So the demolition is beginning within the next week, I believe, and so that project is getting going. And, you know, we will have some items that come before the school committee throughout the fall that are related to that, but we're really excited to get that going and, you know, looking forward to the outcomes of that project.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Pete? Alex?
Just a quick question on the auditorium. Any updated, anticipated, like, completion date for us?
Oh, Alex, you asked a great question. So right now, we are still in our anticipated timeline of, you know, a little bit past Christmas. We, you know, we have put in the orders for some of the of the pieces that we need. We have, those orders have not yet been delayed, although we do anticipate some of them may be, particularly the HVAC units are very hard to get, and the timeline on them, you know, can be up to 36 weeks.
So the goal is still to be able to get in there by the spring, hopefully to see some great theater productions, concerts, stuff like that?
I'll just say we're still in the hopeful stage.
Oh, good. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for Pete? Diane?
Just a quick one. You mentioned the change from Power School to Schoology. Is that from the same company?
It is. So it was their impetus. So basically, it was, think of it as an upgrade within the same platform. We just had to do more training because there were some, the basic concepts remained the same, but some of the interface had some changes to it. And we are doing trainings for parents along the way with that as well.
How's that going to work?
So Colleen's not here, but I know Colleen had some requests from parents on open house night and some other, some other times to just do, you know, some basic thing. It works basically the same as it did before. Again, just some of the interface is slightly different.
All right. Any other questions for Pete? All right. Thank you. Okay. So we are moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve Consent Agenda Item CA 1A, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA? Just, that's it. CA 1A, CA 2A, and CA 2B.
Yeah, we can do that one twice. So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Our expenditures for the two months ended August 31st totaled $3,384,627, and that's 9.77% of our budget. Expenses and our encumbrances for the two months ended August 31st, $28,424,945, and that's 82.01% of our budget.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Karen? Okay. So we're moving on to school committee business. We have two policies that we have a first read. So for the first one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the first read of the Narragansett School System Suicide Prevention Policy?
So moved.
Discussion. All right. Pete?
So the Nathan Bruno Act was, was approved or designed and approved by the Rhode Island Legislature in response to a student suicide. And in Narragansett, as you know, we have unfortunately had students who have committed suicide in the past. And so it's something that we take really seriously. And the Nathan Bruno Act actually confirmed a lot of the things that we've been doing, allowed us to kind of step back and say, is there anything that we need updating? And we are required, but also want to have a policy about suicide prevention. And so if you recall, several years ago, we had an extremely generous donation from Chad O'Brien's family to support education and suicide prevention. And so we have used that donation over the last several years to ensure that we are doing training with all of our faculty every year in suicide prevention. And so that's the main thrust of this And so that's the main thrust of this policy, it's something that we were doing anyway, but this just formalizes it a little bit more. What this policy also does in a positive way and formalizes some of our practices that were in place, is really looks at what happens if there is a suicide attempt? How do we identify and screen for students that may be at risk? How do we support students and families that may have experienced a suicide attempt? And how do we kind of help a student re-enter, re-enter the school after ongoing a traumatic event like that? What it also does is outline acceptable curriculum, and so the State Department of Education has a list of approved curricula that we can use, which we were using already within our health and wellness classes. The only addition for us is that we had taught at grades six and above, and in this case, we're going grades, we're using it with grade five as well, which is what the model policy asks for us to do. So, overall, you know, I would recommend this policy to you in that not only does it confirm some of the work that we were already doing, but allowed us to step back and refine it a little bit and access statewide resources.
Questions or comments for Pete?
Just a general question. This is actually for whoever can answer this question. Where does the language that this is written from come from? Who authored it? Was this the policy committee? Was this modeled off somewhere else? Just curious.
So, I took the statewide policy and condensed it a little bit, and so this, the, as a part of the law, the General Assembly required a RIDE to create a model policy. So I took that model policy and then adjusted it so that it fit Narragansett and also met the requirements of the law.
Well, thank you very much for condensing that and all your hard work that went into this, really appreciate it. Thank you.
It's really good to hear, once again, that, you know, Narragansett leading the way in doing what is right for children before there is a law that requires that, we're already, you know, we're already doing that, so that's wonderful.
Yes, and, you know, again, these are really tough times for families, and we're very aware of that. You know, I did have all of our mental health staff review the policy, and our health and wellness teachers review the policy before we brought it forward, and, you know, they had a little bit of feedback that we made some adjustments to, but they were very supportive of it.
And extremely time-sensitive coming, you know, coming out of COVID, you know, that we've got this policy. So this is a first read. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, and we will see that policy again next month to adopt it. Okay, so on to business item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the first read of the Narragansett School System library policy?
So moved.
Discussion.
So, this is actually the updating of an old policy, so, and, so I would like to welcome up Joan Maresian up to the podium. So Joan is our middle school librarian, as many of you know, and Joan is also the president of-
Yeah, the school librarians of Rhode Island. So, it's always been a concern about selection policy in library, in our library, and what we would do if we had a parent or a community member ask for reconsideration. So you're probably aware that there have been incidents within the past year in Westerly, in North Kingstown, we had, in Smithfield, parents requested that certain books be removed from the library. So I was looking at our policy, which we had, but I was concerned that it needed to be updated, so I contacted Dr. Cummings and Gail, and then Joanne Goncalveski and I worked on the policy this summer. We based it on the American Library Association recommendation. We had been to a few conferences or workshops on how to write a policy and what to include, and so we worked on it with Gail, we gave it to Dr. Cummings, and then I think he tweaked it. There were a couple of things that needed to be changed, and that's the policy that you have in front of you. We're just trying to be preemptive in case there is a circumstance where someone asks to have a book reconsidered in the library.
Questions or comments from the school committee?
I was just wondering, just for record's sake, if it was possible to provide just a general summary for the public, what the differences are between the old policy and the new policy? I know we can see it, but just for the record.
I think this policy is more detailed in how we make our selection of the books in the library, and it's also detailed in the process that a community member would have to go through in order to request having a book reconsidered. So, there's a questionnaire that was added, and certain questions, have you read the whole book? What are, what are your reasons for objecting to this book? You know, it was, we've tried to put in as much detail as possible so that we could be able to respond to any kind of request about our collection.
I would also like to compliment Joan and her colleagues for, first of all, we have wonderful libraries, and, you know, highly utilized by our students, and they are particularly adept at ensuring that our library collections are focused on the appropriate age range of students within each school. And so, part of the policy is to better explain to people how books are selected to be in a library in the first place, right? And it's very curriculum-based, interest-based, age-appropriate, you know, kind of going off of nationally-vetted and accredited resources and recommendations. So, you know, often people have the misperception that the librarians will go like, oh, I'm going to go on Amazon and see what books I like. And, you know, it's very far from the truth, right? They deeply research and put a lot of work into what books are in our library and make sure that they are attached to our curriculum. Part two that I will call your attention to is the, you know, the, it has moved from any one person kind of deciding, you know, whether a book should be in the library or not, to a more committee approach, right? And the reason for that is we want to stay away from the perception that the loudest voice carries the day. And, you know, what we really want to do is make sure that people are giving reasoned and thoughtful study to what is in the library collection, and if someone has an objection to that, right, we give that person, you know, the reasonable consideration, listen to their objection to it, study it, have a committee of reasonable people look at it with representation both from the community and within the school, and then come to consensus on what the next steps would be. And so I think the policy is both, A, respectful of the hard work our librarian and expertise of our librarians, and B, allows appropriate community input and feedback within that setting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee?
Just, oh.
Just one quick question. So I'm just looking at the timeline of this process, so I'm wondering, just curious, if someone does request reconsideration, there is 10 days to set up a committee, there's 45 days continued from there, is that book then sort of off the shelf during this investigation, or is it still open to the public or students who want to have access to it during the time of its reconsideration?
I'm not sure. I'm glad it's still on the shelf.
I would think so too, because it, it doesn't come off the shelf until this committee, right? So why would you pull it preemptively? Because people could just fill out this piece of paper, and we could have 30 books off the shelf, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Good question.
I think, looking at it, it looks like this was last updated over 10 years ago, right? So, I think this is well overdue, thank you. And I've seen it the last year, especially with a lot of requests for schools to handle this, so this is, I think this is a good update, so.
Right, and Josh, just to answer, we did put it right in there, so no material shall be removed from circulation until a final decision has been made.
I missed that part.
Section five.
Diane?
My only concern is the citizen request for reconsideration form being six pages long and mostly essay questions. I thought that, to some people, might be a little off-putting, the length of it, and also having to, to answer in the essay response in the essay format. And so my only suggestion would, if that could be maybe condensed down to maybe two or three pages, with some of the questions having a lot of overlap, and maybe some of those can be combined together, it might be more user-friendly, I guess, is what I'm suggesting it be. So, other than that, I think the policy was, as Justin said, very ready to be updated, so thank you for all your work.
And then it certainly wouldn't be a requirement for someone to answer every question either.
That's correct, but I'm sorry. Part of what we were looking at is to make sure that people have read-
You gotta be right at the microphone, so if people, they won't be able to hear you at home.
Oh, I'm sorry. Part of what we were looking at was that people who may ask for reconsideration had read the whole book and not ju, there are certain books you can pull passages out of, and it might not look okay for a student to read, but then when you read it in the whole context. So I think that was part of the reason why the questionnaire was so long, but we certainly can minimize it.
Yeah, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, we'll look at it. Could I just say one more thing? It's really, I didn't mention the students, but it's so important for them to be able to come into the library and pick out a book that reflects them, or reflects, or answers some questions, or helps them explore some things that might be going on in their life. And I think that was, you know, a big push for this as well, that concern for the students being able to access information.
I couldn't agree with you more. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all your time and effort to work on this policy, because that is a lot of work, and I wonder, you know, once Narragansett adopts it, again, that may be another model policy for other districts in Rhode Island.
Right, especially since you're the president of the Rhode Island Library Association, it'd be a good way to disseminate it.
I've already had people ask me for it, but I'm not really so listening to what happened.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, and thank you. Okay, so we are on to number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the director of Finance and Administration, to approve the Narragansett School System tuition rates for the 22-23 school year?
So moved.
Discussion.
So, as you all know, we, we do have this formula every year, and we do calculate our tuition rates mainly for our work with Jamestown. So we do have some students that tuition in K8, pre-K8. Mainly our tuitioned students at the high school, that rate is set by RIDE, based on UCOA formulas that they do. And so this is a part of our kind of yearly contract with Jamestown. Jamestown will be pleased to know that their rate went down this year slightly, and that is mainly due to the fact that we have more students in the high school, and so because of that, the overall per pupil went down a bit. You know, if you have specific questions about the, about the math behind it, I will refer you to Karen, but certainly the, the overall is very consistent with what we've done in the past.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. I noticed that the, the high school was a decrease of 894, and then special ed also was decreased $760.
Correct, because we, again, Melissa has been doing a great job really looking at our overall special ed funding and making sure that, you know, where we may have had staff that were kind of serving, you know, just a few students consolidating in a couple of areas, and also really looking at some really innovative programs, like the Harbor Program, to ensure that we're keeping students in district. And so a lot of the costs that we get is vastly increased every time that we have to outplace a student. And so the investment of keeping students in the district long-term, even though it costs us with staff, it's still less expensive than outplacing a student. The Transition Academy is a perfect example of that.
Just a quick question. So you were specifically talking about Jamestown with these rates, but a student who tuitions in for the Transition Academy, are we looking at these similar rates? Even if they're not from Jamestown?
No. So the Transition Academy is typically done on an individual basis because those students' needs are so individualized, so, you know, a student in Transition Academy, for example, may need a one-to-one para, they may have other equipment or mobility pieces that we have to account for within that price.
Can I add just a question?
Yeah, so I just think there's always some misconceptions every year about our tuition rates, and particularly people, like, how it affects our budget if it's, because it's sometimes not aligned with the cost of this, average cost per student. Do you want, can you touch on that for the audience at home, just to explain, like, no, it's fine?
I would be happy to pass that baton to Karen, in terms of, there are certain factors that are not weighed into these tuition rates.
Well, that was when we were, when we were determining how we were going to calculate the rate for Jamestown, we put a lot of thought into what we believed were, were courses that were very specific to students, and that's how we came up with this rate. So it doesn't include all of the courses of the school, because some of those courses are overhead courses, or they, they are not really specifically student-related, so we decided just to really stick to the instructional and the support of the instruction to come up with that rate.
So generally, if you were to look on page three, we charge for instruction and instructional support, but we don't, for example, charge for business operations for kind of some of those other essential elements of a district that we have to have to run our district, but would not be essential for Jamestown. The reasoning at the time was, it is not appropriate for Jamestown to be paying for our business operations, they are really paying for the instruction and instructional support.
Right, because our business operations would be there no matter what at that level, no matter how many students were in that school.
The billing's not going to change, the trust isn't going to change, none of that. Yeah, yeah, so they're not a negative, just like, so, okay, good.
Correct.
Thank you.
So when you see a per pupil from RIDE, for example, that is different than this tuition rate, that is everything, right? So that's business operations, that's property services, that is transportation, that is summer school, that is headlights, everything.
A much less sophisticated number than what we're using.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, just thank you very much for providing this breakdown and of the analysis of the cost per pupil, that, you know, we do get questions, and this is, allows us to be very well-educated on this, and really appreciate the hard work that went into this. Thank you.
Great, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And the last business item for tonight, is there a motion to renew the superintendent's contract for the period of 2022 to 2025?
So moved.
Discussion. So I want to just share a little bit about the timeline. So our process began this summer in August. Diane, can you just explain, like, the instrument that we used, or where you found that, just like the actual instrument that we used?
Sure. We updated our instrument based on the updated standards of the American Association of School Administrators, and so we, we took those standards and formatted them in, in a way that would meet the needs of a superintendent evaluation instrument, and so it's our first- a way that would meet the needs of a superintendent evaluation instrument. And so it's our first time using the new format. There are three parts to it. And so far, I think it's gone quite well. You were fairly, all the topics that you need to be covered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. And so that was ratings that we did individually. We met together as a school committee and executive session to discuss that. We met with Pete, gave him our feedback. And while, you know, not appropriate to share the exact feedback, I wanted to kind of just share some informal, you know, comments that definitely the general consensus of the school committee, extremely, extremely pleased and appreciative. There's 15 things I could name, but off, like, I was really trying to think of the themes that we came up with, with your leadership consistently. And, you know, really, the, one of the highlights is your leadership through COVID and post-COVID was really exceptional. All of the work, you know, besides running the school district, to then, you know, remember, you know, many, many Zoom meetings with you, and you would say, well, we, we haven't done pandemic before, but, you know, here is what we need to do to keep kids safe and keep staff safe and keep schools open. And so really exceptional, leading the district through COVID, and then really being proactive, acknowledging the pandemic learning loss that is, was an immediate result, and the social-emotional impact too. And so lots of different pieces that no superintendent has ever done. And I know a lot of other superintendents in the district were really reaching out to you for guidance and leadership. And your communication skills, not only with the school committee, but all the messaging to the families to just reassure them, to be very proactive with the, here are all the precautions that we are doing, following the RIDO guidance to keep your children safe and to keep our staff safe. Really, you know, impressive. You know, the other big thing that I, I would think of is your work on the budget, you know, and that's a team approach, you know, with Karen and the administrators and everyone. But a big part of that is the relationship that we have with the town that you have built and sustained with the town manager, with town council members, with our open door policy. This is like my 14th year on the school committee, and every single year, you led us through a budget season where the town really understood and valued the budget, and we got our full appropriation, which never happened for a decade, you know, before you came here. So that's really impressive. And, you know, with that, I could go on and on with your guidance with the, you know, the school, the district strategic plan, and, you know, the focus on professional development, and the hiring and recruiting of, you know, your admin team, lots and lots of different arenas. And again, that's just our, my kind of informal soundbite of the themes that came up from the full school committee. So I, you know, we're gonna take a vote in a second here, but 100%, really, really excited and happy to renew and extend your existing contract. And a big thank you for all of your, your leadership and guidance and your vision. That's my, my-
Thank you, and very kind. I appreciate it. You know, I sincerely love working in Narragansett. It's a wonderful community. I think we have, you know, great families, great students, and true investment in the success of the schools. And so, as you mentioned, you know, I truly believe that it's a team approach and a partnership approach. And working in this community really makes that possible. And so, you know, I am appreciative of the support of the school committee and looking forward to continuing. So thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote?
You covered that really well.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. So you're stuck with us another three years, or the district. The district is stuck with you. Okay, are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? All right, so we are back for our regular October meeting, October 19th at 7:00. And then Pete, Pete, please reach out to us if you need a special meeting, if we've got some purchases or any business to do before the October 19th meeting, just reach out and we'll set something up and advertise that.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:13?
So moved.
All in favor?